Call our July 15th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Whoever roll call, please.
Councilman Womack.
Here.
Councilman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Shelton.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wheaton.
Here.
Councilman Walker.
Here.
Five press.
At this time, I'd like to invite those that wish to do so to stand for the invocation given tonight by Mark Dahl, pastor of Washington Avenue Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States flag.
Can we pray? But again, we just thank you for the avenue of prayer and how powerful it is. We do thank you for our council, and we just pray that you will guide and lead them as they make decisions tonight, and for our city. We thank you for the wonderful city of Cookeville. We thank you for, Lord, just how you have blessed our community, and so many people are moving into this community. So, Lord, again, we thank you, God, and lead us in our fair city, and that we would, you'd be glorified. And, Lord, I thank you most of all for Jesus who died on the cross, and through him we have eternal life. In his name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mark. Out of three, consider approval of agenda as presented, or are there any changes?
No changes, Mark.
All right, is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Under four A, consider appointment to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Mr. Coons.
Mayor and council, the term of David Laramore on the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board has expired, and if appointed, Mr. Laramore has agreed to serve another term. I've requested that the City Council recommend a Cookeville resident to fill a vacancy on the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board. Councilman Miller has recommended Gary Lund. Mr. Lund lives inside the city limits and, if appointed, has agreed to serve. I would recommend the appointment of David Laramore and Gary Lund to the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board for a term ending September 2024.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Under Rule Business 5A, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on July 1, 2021. Is there a motion?
No.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Under five B, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-201121, rezoning a portion of a parcel located on Tennessee Avenue, tax map 64074.00, from commercial, industrial, mixed use to heavy manufacturing. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This ordinance was approved at the December 10th, 2020 council meeting on first reading. We have held second reading on this ordinance until Ms. Kiper was ready to move forward with a potential prospect locating on the property. We've had no changes since first reading. I know it's been some time, but I'm happy to read you ready if the council has any questions for me, but I would recommend your approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion on the second reading?
No.
Second.
Motion, second. Comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Five C, consider on second and final reading ordinance O-210614, the rezoning of one parcel located on Buffalo Valley Road, tax map 54093.03, from RS10 Single Family Residential to RS5 Single Family Residential. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. There have been no changes to the ordinance since first reading, and we've had no calls or comments, and I recommend your approval on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Under the consent agenda, six A, set a date, 8/19/21, for a public hearing on ordinance O-210715, the rezoning of 439 East Sixth Street, tax map 53-C-D006, and a portion of 535 North Washington Avenue, tax map 53-C-D007, from RS15 Single Family Residential to RS10 Single Family Residential. Is there a motion to set the date?
No.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Under New Business, seven A, consider resolution R-210721, conveying a portion of a parcel of land, 4370 Tennessee Avenue, to an Industrial Development Board of the City of Cookeville, Tennessee. Linda Kiper.
Mayor and council, first of all, let me say how incredibly excited I am to be standing here in front of you with an agenda item on economic development. It has been a long 12, 15, 18 months. But with that said, I wanted to kind of give just a minute to let you know the incredible team you have in this room, to remind you, we hosted nine South Korean engineers this past week on a site visit, and while the site ultimately was not right for this particular company, I cannot tell you how important it is that every time you swipe your card in this community, it matters. Every time you pick up a piece of trash when you're walking into business, it matters. Every time you donate to the university, or your church, or to WCTE, it matters, because we won them and got an A-plus on community, and the way we treated them, and what we looked like, and what we felt like. And so, kudos. We're very blessed, and we need to keep up the good work. Also, I wanted to share a couple of things with you. In May 2019, our unemployment rate was 3.2. In May 2020, our unemployment rate was 8.3, which was down from April, when it was 15. In May 2021, I'm happy to report to you, unemployment rate in Putnam County is 4.1 versus the TBA region, which is seven states, they're at 4.7. Versus the US for May, they're at 5.8. Versus the state of Tennessee, they're at 5.0. In the last 90 to 100 days, we filled out eight RFIs from across the globe, and they've represented several sectors. People are coming back to work. We've got lots of work to do. I want you to be encouraged, I want you to feel confident about your team, and know that we are poised for an incredibly great future. So I hope that was good for you to hear. People are coming back to work, and we're excited. What I have before you now is a parcel on Tennessee Avenue that we will be conveying to the Industrial Development Board, as you will see in the resolution. By state code, we are able to do that. The company will be locating there. The Industrial Development Board will facilitate the sale/purchase agreement. The rezoning was required as part of that. Also, in that resolution, you'll notice that the company will be required to make road improvements. They are not asking for incentives, and they are going to be an incredible community partner. With that said, we're going to have a representative, the weather and the rain, they've been so busy or not here, but hopefully they'll be here soon so they can introduce themselves to you in this community, and I think you'll greet them with open arms. With that said, I respectfully request your approval.
Thank you. Thanks for the great update. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Motion, second. Questions or comments from the council?
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven B, consider approval of bid for additional gas transportation capacity for the gas department. Jeff Mills.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you all know, the largest concern facing the gas department is the ability to keep up with the growing demands of gas consumption due to our pipeline suppliers' current limited availability delivery space. Cookeville was made aware of the capacity release of a daily quantity of 3,000 decathems a day from another consumer of the pipeline. This turn back of delivery space is currently open to bidding with the pipeline. The maximum tariff rate for this is $13.68 per decathem. Bids are expected to be received at the maximum tariff rate, with the variable being the term of contract the bidder chooses for his contract. The bid closes July 19th at 2:00 p.m. The disadvantages are having the extra delivery demand capacity is the cost. The demand charge is paid monthly, whether actual transportation of the gas is delivered daily or not. This request is for the space in the pipeline to deliver the gas. It is not dealing with any gas purchases. The additional demand cost for the bid I'm proposing would be $492,480 per year. This would equate to a potential 8% increase to customer billing. The increased pipe capacity will allow us to ensure the guaranteed delivery of gas to our firm, residential, commercial, and industrial customers on peak consumption days, as well as provide anticipated capacities for future system growth. Extra pipeline capacity on this segment of East Tennessee natural gas is difficult to obtain due to availability. With the additional 3,000 decathems per day, we would expect to be able to manage our growth needs for several years to come. Our concerns is if we do not attempt to obtain this capacity while we have the opportunity, and if future demand necessitates additional capacity, we may not be able to establish the needed capability with the pipeline for the transportation. I apologize for the shortness of the evaluation period that I've requested this for you guys, but the process was just started this week, and the bid is due Monday, the 19th. My request is for the approval for the opportunity to bid and the authorization for the city manager to sign the contract should we be the successful bidder, and I will answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Second. Questions from the council?
How often does an opportunity like this come along?
It's the first that's been available in several years.
So, yeah.
And the reason being, it's, and I think it's public knowledge now, Oggleford down in Georgia turned back this capacity because they are capable of getting some from another pipeline, and they have the opportunity to get some at a little cheaper rate, so they turned this back. And there are no guarantees that we'll get this, it's just giving it our best shot. There is a lot of interest in it right now, obviously.
We did this a few years ago, too, right?
We did, yes. Yes, we were fortunate, and it was an upgrade program that they had through a compressor station, so it was at a much cheaper rate, but yes, we did.
Any other questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven C, consider approval of 2021 Wellness Screening Program Agreement. Mr. Carl Sales.
Mayor and council, as you all know, for the past many years, the city has partnered with the Cookeville Regional Medical Center as part of its overall wellness program to annually offer a variety of wellness screenings to its employees. This year's agreement has not substantially changed in any form from last year's agreement. As you can see on the screen, some of the screenings available are at no cost, while others are available to the employees at a deeply discounted price. With no substantive changes being made between this year's agreement and last year's agreement, I'm requesting you to approve the agreement and authorize the city manager to sign that agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions from the council? All vote. Thank you.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven D, consider awarding bid for one street sweeper utilizing the Sourcewell Purchase Contract for ID number 122017, FSC Public Works Department, Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we would like to replace our existing sweeper with a 2021 Elgin Street Sweeper through the Sourcewell Contract. The bid price is $247,456. This is a budget item, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Any questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven E, consider awarding bid for two pickup trucks utilizing statewide contract 209, contract ID 64473, Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we would like to purchase two four-wheel-drive pickups from statewide contract. The price of one is $28,594, the second one is $26,279, for a total price of $54,873. These trucks are in the budget, and I would request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Second. Consider awarding bid, seven L, consider awarding bids for one wheel loader utilizing statewide contract 220, contract ID 48439, one tandem dump truck utilizing Sourcewell Purchase Contract, ID 060920, and one mini excavator utilizing Sourcewell, contract ID 040319, Water Quality Control Departments, Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we're requesting authorization to purchase budgeted equipment we put in our budget this year, tandem dump truck, wheel loader, or mini X. They are from the Sourcewell or state contract. I would recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Second. Motion, second. Any questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven G, consider awarding bid for seven pickups, one SUV, and one service body truck, and one flatbed truck utilizing statewide contract 209, ID 64473, electric, gas, and water quality control. Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, this is a combination of water, electric, and gas. We sort of combined them all. It's all budgeted vehicle replacements in our departments, and we'd recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. Seven H, consider approval to purchase three administrative vehicles for the police department, Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, these are three administrative vehicles. Two of those are pre-owned vehicles from Ford of Cookeville, 2017 Ford Escape, 22,74672, 2018 Ford Escape, 20,35136, and also a Ford SUV on the statewide contract at $39,399, a total cost of $79,49708. These are budgeted items in the drug fund, and I request your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council? All vote.
Sorry.
Change.
I mean, how do I change?
The button you want. All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven I, consider approval to purchase IT equipment for the new police department headquarters, Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, this is the IT equipment infrastructure for our new facility. We've got actually three, maybe, well, technically four pieces that we want to purchase. The first one is the switches and racks, and the vendor is SHI, it's on a Sourcewell contract for $26,265. The second one is the UPS, the Uninterruptible Power Supply. The vendor is Howard, it is on a buyboard contract for $43,651. And last but not least, the vendor here is Insight. This is our flash array storage from Omni Partners, and also the support piece of that is on the statewide contract, the NASPRO software contract, a total of $44,80615. Total cost is $114,72215, and this is budgeted in our FFDE budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion, second. Any questions from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven J, consider authorizing the city manager entering into a memorandum of understanding with National Alliance on Mental Illness Tennessee, Chief Evans.
Mayor and council, this is a memorandum of understanding is in cooperation with probably several of our partners within Upper Cumberland, so it'll be part of a grant application. Of course, as was discussed in work session, there's no guarantee that the grant will be approved, but NAMI, I think, is the lead agency applying for the grant, which would require our assistance, our cooperation, along with Putnam County 911 Volunteer Behavioral Health Systems, which is Plato Mills Health Center, Dr. Cumberland, the resource agency, and certainly NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. The goal there is to establish a mobile crisis intervention team. It would be a co-response team, as we discussed, which would include mental health professionals, medical professionals, and, when needed, law enforcement, who will follow the Kahoots model, which is a model that was originally implemented in Eugene, Oregon, with some great success, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any questions, comments from the council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven K, consider awarding bid for one 2021 CAT backhoe loader utilizing statewide contract 220, ID 48439, for leisure services, Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a request for a backhoe, new backhoe, 2021 backhoe, to replace backhoe that we have in our department. This is on statewide contract, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion, second. Any questions from council? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Seven L, consider awarding bid for two pickups utilizing statewide contract 209, ID 64473, leisure services, Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for two pickup trucks, one for the Department of Leisure Services, the other for Customer Service Department, for a meter reader, full-size pickup and a mid-size pickup. These are statewide, this is state bid price, and these are budgeted items, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Seven M, consider approval of system-wide recreation master plan for Department of Leisure Services and Public Facilities, Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm pleased to get to this point. We've been working for the past five and a half months on a system-wide master plan for the Department of Leisure Services, but for the city of Cookeville as a whole, and I'm pleased that we are now have completed that process, and we've tried to keep you abreast of that process as we've gone, and send you updates as they've been developed. We've provided for you this evening the final draft, or the final version of that. We've been working very closely with Kenley Horn, who's done a terrific job leading us through this process, and here with us is our project manager with Kenley Horn, who was going to make a few remarks, and then I'll be back. This is Alicia Ely. Please welcome Alicia.
Thank you. This has been a very enjoyable process. We have been doing several of these, and as you all know, Cookeville is a very special place, and we've had a great experience working with a very passionate staff and department, stakeholders as yourselves, and the community as a whole. We had a great turnout from the survey results, and all of our public meetings were well attended, even though we were still had some remnants of COVID, and we were able to have some virtual meetings and in-person meetings, and still had great attendance. So we're very appreciative of that support through the process. It's been, you know, in the plan, and again, you all know Cookeville is very unique in its location off the interstate, recreation destinations, very large service area was very unique for Cookeville. It's not just within the city limits. We looked at a much larger service area that you all are very familiar with, and essentially, you know, in summary, providing a very good level of service currently, and ultimately it's a 10-year plan on how to move forward and continue to serve the city very well. So if you recall, here's the schedule that we proceeded with. We started in February to really start off our engagement process. We had, late February, we came and had some multiple days here. We interviewed all of the staff. We visited each of the sites and facilities for evaluations that are documented in the master plan, and then had what we called the SWOT analysis. We evaluated and listened to the public and stakeholders for the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, is one of the requirements for the plan. In March, early March, we opened the public survey. Again, we had over 1,600 responses, which we were always optimistic to get 500. So again, just that passion coming through, and a lot of great feedback that ultimately drove a lot of the recommendations and the implementation plan there at the end of the document itself. We went into May and really evaluated all the additional data and resources, benchmarking other communities to summarize those draft recommendations, and came back in May for those review meetings held virtually and in person, and got a lot of great feedback. And then we also met with you all in June to review those draft elements, too, as a council workshop item, and received great comments from you all, and implemented those into that final document that Rick mentioned before you tonight. And then ultimately, finishing here in July, right before the August 3rd deadline, again, this was a requirement for a grant that Mr. Woods is submitting on this year, being the first system-wide master plan being required. So just in time for that, and just the final slide, again, thank you all. Great community, was very enjoyable, very hospitable, similar to what Melinda said. We felt the exact same every time we came to visit and speak with folks, so we have enjoyed it and appreciate your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Asha.
Thank you, Alicia. Again, Alicia's been great to work with, and her team at Kenley Horn. As she mentioned, this is a requirement for eligibility for grants, including the LPRF Grant Program administered by TDEC, and I'm very pleased with the outcome of this planning process, and I believe this plan will serve our department and our community very well for the next few years. I thank you, council, for your support, and I thank all the staff and those citizens in our community who participated with ideas and feedback and recommendations, and I am very pleased to request and recommend your approval at this point.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
No.
Second.
Motion, second. Any comments or questions from the council?
I'm with the process as well, getting to have the work session. Thank you for doing that, taking extra time to sit down with us and go through it all, because it's really exciting stuff that we can be doing for the city, so thanks.
Absolutely, and we appreciate it, Alicia, for your work on this. I said that wrong a minute ago. Any other comments or questions? All vote.
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seventeen, consider resolution R-210720, commending Fire Chief Darrell Blair for services rendered. It's time, we want to go to our step to the lectern there, sir. We'll read this resolution for you from the council. Whereas with a career journey in public service that has spanned over three decades, Darrell Blair joined the City of Cookeville Fire Department as a firefighter in December 1987. Whereas Darrell has exhibited loyalty and dedication to the department and citizens of Cookeville during his tenure, working through the ranks, achieving captain in 2007, and accepting appointment as chief in July of 2017. Whereas Chief Blair's distinguished service has not only impacted this community, but has included leadership in the esteemed position as a member of the Board of Directors for the Tennessee Fire Chiefs Association from 2006 to 2017, along with the Upper Cumberland Regional Council of Fire Chiefs, serving as president for one year on both. And whereas Chief Blair has earned many notable accomplishments during his tenure, including a fire science associate's degree, assistant to the commissioner's certificate, emergency medical technician from Tennessee Tech, with numerous certificates from ongoing educational training through the National Fire Academy, and the State of Tennessee Commission on Firefighting. And whereas sincere appreciation is due to Chief Blair's cherished family for the support they have offered during his career for the department and community, and now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Cookeville, Tennessee, is the sense of this council that those dedicated public servants who unselfishly devote their lives to the preservation or order and the protection and safety of others are worthy and do full praise for their commitment and noble endeavors, now therefore be it resolved that this most auspicious occasion be marked by honoring Chief Darrell Blair upon the occasion of his retirement after 33 years of dedicated service to the Cookeville Fire Department, this community and region, and that this resolution shall be duly recorded and filed in the city clerk's office. Thank you, Chief. Say a few words?
Y'all heard that? He's talking about me now. Mayor, thank you for the kind comments. I wanted to make sure I got this right, because this is my last hurrah. I want to make sure I got this right because this is my last hurrah. And, but Mayor Shep, council members, city manager, Mr. Mills. First and foremost, I want to thank the good Lord above for letting me have a great ride to career. Second, it's going to be the hard part. My wife and my family are here. They've always stood by me inside and they've made so many sacrifices for my career. Thank you for that. I love yous. Thank you. I appreciate it. They're my rock of ages. Oh, so much to a lot of people who have helped me achieve so much in life. I've had the privilege to work with several great people in my career. Oh, a special thank you to Chief McCoy Shepton for giving me a chance when I started in this department in 1987. And though we got past the horse and buggy days, so you don't have to have all the hay and everything. But I'm truly a blessed man and can honestly say I have lived a dream in this chapter of my life. Not many people get to do that. I had a couple of discussions last year with Mr. Mills and about retiring. And I told him that this was probably going to be my last year and I would let him know. Well, it's jaywalking. That precious thing right there. When I got to hold her for the first time, it was the best decision ever made in my life. Because everybody told me about grandkids. I never thought that a grandbaby could have that kind of impact on. Now where she gets that hollering from, I don't know. But I knew it was time and I made the decision to retire and I turned my nose into Mr. Mills. And I ain't never looked back. I did move it up some because of her. And as my family knows and everybody knows me close, my family is special. And I believe in family. But I'm very proud of the achievements we have made during my time as chief. We didn't get everything, but I am grateful to have been able to put a big piece of the puzzle together. The groundwork is laid for this department to keep moving forward. The vision I had when I took over would not have been possible without the city manager, council, and the many women of the fire department for their support. And for that, I'm grateful for you and I appreciate it. Thank you. The Cookville Fire Department is well-recognized across this region and state, the many women from the command staff down to firefighters, they're second to none. I'd put them up against anybody. But the time has come and I can't wait to enjoy it. I know you're going to miss me, Mr. Mills, but I'll still take some. But again, thank each of you for allowing me this great adventure that I've been able to have. Now it's time for me to have a blast. Thank you.
Do we have a motion on resolution?
So moved.
Motion second. Any comments from the council? Let's see. I would just say, Chief, thank you. Appreciate your dedication and service to the city during your time and certainly wish you well in your retirement.
Thank you.
Sir. Any other comments?
I'd just, I'd like to thank you very much for a long career in public service and giving back to your community. Thank you.
All of them?
All votes correct. Five yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And that now concludes our agenda portion. We have time at the end for anyone that would like to address the council on non-agenda items. Do we have any? Oh, yes. To the lectern, please. Just identify yourself and if you're in the city or not, please.
Hi, my name is Mary Havitt and I live at 103 Prophet Street in Cookeville. I'm here because on the street that I live on, the cars race up that street, up and down that street. It's just unbelievable. We have children on the street and sometimes when I'm sitting on the front porch and those kids are out there and these cars are racing by, my heart goes in my throat because it's just a matter of time before one of these kids goes chasing a ball or their car, whatever they're chasing, and they don't think like adults think. They just go. And I just, it's difficult even to get out of your driveway. You can't get out of your driveway. I mean, you could be in the street, out of the driveway, and they will just blow their horn or just speed coming at you. You have to pull back it. And there's no signs here that say, you know, children are playing or, I don't know if we have signs like that in Cookeville. But, you know, there's nothing to, not that I believe that they would obey anyway, even if they saw a sign. But it's just, the speed at which they come is unbelievable. And I just was wondering, I've called the town a couple of times. Nothing's any different. And I was just wondering if there was something that, you know, the town can do to correct that situation. And that's all I have. Thank you for hearing me.
Yeah, thank you. Well, certainly, you said 103 Prophet Street, correct?
Yes.
All right. So we'll make sure that the chief has that and can see if there's something that can be done for that, okay?
Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right. Anything from the council?
Some good news. At the regional railroad meeting, the Nashville and Eastern Railroad this afternoon, at noon, a representative from TDOC said that the commissioner, TDOC commissioner, was about to sign a letter offering to pay 8.2 something million to the Nashville and Eastern Railroad Authority to help pay off the USDA loan that had been barred back in 2006 to run the railroad up from Allgood to Monterey. There's been some things going back and forth and because of lawsuits about the fuel tax and the, this was great news. No one in the room, other than the TDOC representative, was expecting this and it made everyone very happy. And the newspapers will probably need to check with TDOC to verify all this and what they're saying about it in the next day or two. So it's good news that there's an offer to pay off our loan from U.S. Department of Agriculture for the expansion of the railroad up to Monterey.